Dieter and Mark. So as soon as I see Ann.
And Holmes, you mean Holmes, Dolores.
Dolores is coming.
Yeah. Well, him and Peter just went in.
No, her's Dolores. I thought they'd be a little quicker. Ready Rodney? Wally?
Yes ma'am.
We ready? Okay. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Nguyen.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Nine zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, April 22nd, 2013, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item on the agenda is the Mayor's Public Announcements and Proclamations. And I have from the City of Evanston, Office of the Mayor, an official proclamation celebrating 100 years of women's suffrage in Illinois. Whereas 2013 is the centennial of women winning the right to vote in Illinois. And whereas Illinois women won the right to vote six years in advance of adoption of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution. And whereas women in Evanston were among the leaders of Illinois women's suffrage movement. And whereas Evanston has a proud history of women serving in appointed and elected office. And whereas Catherine McCullough of Evanston was the author of the bill granting suffrage to Illinois women. And whereas Evanston held a suffrage rally on June 14th, 1913, to celebrate passage of the law, which rally was described as the largest public demonstration in the history of Evanston. And whereas the League of Women Voters of Evanston, in partnership with the Evanston Women's History Project at the Evanston History Center, the Frances Willard Historical Association, and the Women's Club of Evanston, will host a celebration of the 100th anniversary of the suffrage rally on June 14th, 2013. Now therefore, I Elizabeth B. Tisdall, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim Friday, June 14th, 2013, as 100 Years of Women Voting Day, and urge all Evanstonians to join in celebrating the proud history of women's suffrage, activism, and leadership in our city. Susan, would you please come? You look ready to have this, the new largest demonstration in Sydney.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Come on up.
Come on, everybody.
Come on, come on, come on, let's go. Show our numbers. How proud we are.
Okay, I'm getting in there for first.
All right.
Stand behind it.
We have one man.
We have one man. Somebody to carry the sign.
Everyone know I'm doing this to honor Frances Willard.
Hand it for your rights.
Okay?
Okay?
I need to take one more with my camera.
Can I get over on the other side?
Here, I can take it if you want to be in.
Okay. It's cranky, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to look, it's old fashioned.
One more.
All right. Preservation Month is May 2013, and Public Service Week is May 5th through 11th. And I have something to say about the Noyes Cultural Arts Center. Having so many artists that they do not all fit into two arts buildings is a wonderful problem to have. That being said, it's still a problem. Last week, the City Manager released the details of the proposed agreement with the Piven Theater Workshop for its long-term renovation of a portion of the Noyes Cultural Arts Center. While I am supportive of this opportunity for Piven to expand its operations at Noyes, I am concerned about the final process that brings this agreement to a conclusion. It appears that not all existing tenants at Noyes can be accommodated under the Piven Plan. The City Manager has notified the Evanston Children's Choir that they must relocate from the building, and Evanston artist Maggie Weiss must relocate to the basement of the building in order for this plan to move forward. The City Manager used the criteria of seniority in the building, absent any other city council approved criteria, when selecting the Children's Choir space to be the space needed to complete the space plan necessary for the Noyes Center. The City Council and I have asked the City Manager to consider developing different criteria for determining relocation of artists or arts groups that would be impacted by the Piven proposal. Revised criteria should first consider if an artist or arts organization is Evanston-based, and the number of Evanston residents served by the artist or arts organization. He has agreed to do this and to report to the Human Services Committee on May 6th, 2013, on revised criteria. In the meantime, the City Manager has notified the Evanston Children's Choir and Ms. Weiss that new tenant relocation criteria will be developed and considered by the City Council, and the notice of their relocation has been withdrawn. That concludes my public announcements and proclamations. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes ma'am, Mayor members of the Council, good evening. First, I'd like to have Matt Swankowski, our Intergovernmental Relations Coordinator, to come up and talk about a partnership we have with the Fourth of July Association this year with the Sesquicentennial, and a meeting that's coming up in a couple of weeks.
Good evening ma'am, Mayor, members of the City Council, Clerk Green, and City Manager, Matt Swankowski, Intergovernmental Affairs Coordinator. The Evanston Fourth of July Association, the City of Evanston, will be hosting a community meeting to gather public input on the Independence Day activity ideas at 7:00 PM on Monday, April 29th, which is a week from tonight. It'll be held at the Fleetwood Jordan Community Center. The goal of the meeting is to get community input on potential new activity sites, generate some additional site partners for the association, create possible transportation improvements to and from the parade, and to get general thoughts on Independence Day activities. In commemoration of Evanston's 150th anniversary, the goal of the association is to have Independence Day events in every Evanston ward. There are already successful events planned in several wards, and there are plenty of community-wide resources, experience, and support available to help create more ideas for activities in other areas of the community. So we hope to see as many residents as we can next Monday, April 29th, at 7:00 PM, at the Fleetwood Jordan Center.
Mr. Swankowski, while you're there, perhaps you could take on the next item you were going to discuss. And earlier this evening, at the Administration of Public Works Committee, we had a presentation of representatives of the Chicago Transit Authority about some work that's going to be happening. This is important information, and I'd ask Matt just to briefly touch the highlights and go through the calendar of the construction.
Matt Swankowski again. So the CTA has contacted the city to discuss doing some slow zone remediation work along the tracks and the purple line. They characterize it as kind of a heavy maintenance renewal project to mitigate the slow zones until they can find the adequate funding to do major renewal. What the project entails is selective track and spot tie renewal, so basically replacing both the wood ties as well as the tracks as well. It's going to last approximately seven months, starting in May. The work is going to be almost primarily at night, and that is due to the fact that they need to do it when the trains aren't running, or they're going to work under what's called a single track. And they're going to replace about 6,000 ties so that riders can experience a smoother and faster ride. What to expect is it's going to be Sunday through Thursday, occurring between 9:00 PM and 4:30 AM. What they've done is after meeting with city staff and addressing a lot of our concerns, they're going to be doing the work with the loudest impact earlier in the evening, which is actually changing from their normal work structure. It is going to be noisy, and CTA came before the committee and made sure that people were aware that there is going to be noise, the loudest noise being approximately what we would experience under a street project. There's going to be some work zone lighting, some minor delays to service, and boarding changes due to the single-track operation. But then also there'll be regular maintenance, so you're going to see CTA vehicles and vehicles doing normal maintenance as you would during any time. The schedule, which you see on the slide above, is basically, what you see here is they're going to work from south to north, and once they leave an area, they will be done at that area. So there will be, and how they designed it this way is so that they can make the greatest impact. So from the city side, I will do like we did for the Viaduct project. I'll create a website to inform residents on what is going on, what the construction schedule looks like. In addition, we will have information available through our 311 Center. I'll be the main point of contact on this project for the residents' businesses, and we'll do our best to address any concerns we, any residents have. And I can take any questions if council members have it.
I think you've explained it very well. Thank you.
Great, thanks Matt. Next, I'd like to ask Paul DiAgostino to come up. As many of you know, we've done a reorganization between Parks Recreation Community Services and Public Works. Mr. DiAgostino is moving to the Public Works Department with a new title as Assistant Director of Public Works for Forestry. His responsibilities now will be exclusively dealing with the urban forest in Evanston, and he is here this evening to talk about the work that we're doing this spring and summer regarding tree removal, and hopefully some tree planting as well.
Absolutely, thank you. Good evening. Earlier this month, I distributed a list of over 400 locations citywide that have trees, ash trees mainly, that are scheduled to be removed in the coming months. The majority of the trees, like I said, are ash trees that were infested with emerald ash bor to varying degrees, and all are located either on the parkways or parked citywide. These 400 tree locations don't include probably close to 200 trees that are on private property that were also tagged for removal. Forestry staff has prioritized the condition of all the trees on the list, and will be removing the trees in the worst condition first. The list that was distributed, though, is an ever-changing list. There's probably already at least two dozen of those trees that I distributed almost two weeks ago that have come down, and we will be shortly adding to that list as the trees begin to leaf out and we see more symptoms of emerald ash bor. We're going to update that list on a monthly basis so that everyone can stay up to date with the locations of coming removals. As a result of these removals, we also have a current backlog of over 600 stumps citywide on the parkways. We've already begun this spring taking these stumps out, and we plan on contracting out some additional stump removals with a private contractor to help us speed that process up. Replanting the trees, due to the high number of removals we've been experiencing over the past two years, we now have approximately a two-year wait between the time we take a tree down and the time we can replant it. And that's mainly because we're taking down far more trees than we have the ability to plant in any given year. So that planting list continues to grow each year. We've been able to, we anticipate this trend to continue at least for the next two to three years, and that's mainly due to the exponential growth of the emerald ash bor and how it spreads. The first five years since 2006, the growth was kind of slow and steady, and now after about the five-year point, that growth swings way up, and we've experienced since last year a very high number of ash tree removals. We were able to secure grants in 2011 and '12 to help us replant trees faster, and we've applied for two more this year, but we have not heard yet on either one of those. And with that, I'd take questions if you have any.
Paul, who did you apply to for the grants?
The Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus and the Great Lakes Initiative.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
And Paul, I know that you've told us this before, but can you say, could you explain publicly that at this point there is no treatment for emerald ash as there is for Dutch elm? Not ineffective?
There are treatments for emerald ash bor, but none of them are as effective as the one we use for elm trees. There is one product out there that has shown promise, and they claim to be over 90% effective, but I haven't seen direct results of that yet, only because the problem is really so new.
Okay, all right.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Paul, could you talk a little bit about what a homeowner does if they have an ash tree in the parkway and want you to evaluate it in terms of having the insecticide applied, and how much that costs for the individual homeowner?
Okay, the best way to get us involved is to call 311 and relay your concerns to them. They'll get it to us, and we'll gladly come out and do an inspection on the tree, whether it's on private property or public property. We can make a judgment at that point in time whether the tree is already infested, and if it is, if it's far enough along that it shouldn't be treated, or if it still is a good candidate to be treated. Those treatments, depending on which one you choose, can run anywhere from $50 up to maybe $200, but the $200 treatment is usually for a very large ash, and it's for a two-year time period. So there's still a lot of options out there, but...
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Assistant Director DiAgostino, would you reassure residents that it's been a long time since we planted trees intentionally using single species along city blocks so that you are incorporating lots of diversity in the tree stock with your replantings?
Yes, I will. The master plan that I inherited when I took the position in 1995 actually assigned a single species to each block in the city. So one block was maples, one block was ash, one block was honey locust. Now, the result of that is, as the insect moves through and kills these ash trees, I'm taking entire blocks of trees down at one time, totally denuding a whole block. But then there's other blocks that are barely even touched because they have no ash trees at all. So as we replant all these sites, we're trying to diversify as much as possible. We're planting, even this spring, I think we're planting six different kinds of oak trees, as well as eight other varieties of trees. And as the nurseries keep growing different varieties, we keep trying to purchase them.
And that should build in some natural protections against these types of diseases.
Against a repeat of this kind of thing, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Alderman Tindham?
Thank you. We have an insurance program for the oak tree, or I'm sorry, elm tree. Is there been any consideration, or is this a big enough sort of infestation to consider an insurance program for residents?
I think at this point in time on the infestation, it's probably a little too late to even consider an insurance program, because I think unless they come up with a miracle cure very soon, I think within three to five years, we may not see many ash trees at all on public or private property.
Alderman Rainey?
I'm not sure everybody knows this, but along Sherman Avenue where it was really denuded, St. Francis Hospital purchased and planted replacement trees, and not the little spindly ones, nice-sized trees they planted, so I appreciate it, and so do other members of my ward.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of things. Some areas in the first ward have been really hard-hit, most recently the area along Noyes Street. We have reached out along with some neighbors to the university to see if we can get their cooperation in planting. And Paul, would you also talk about the ability that residents have if they wish to purchase and plant a tree at their own expense? What the process is for them to work with you and to get that approval?
Sure. Again, that's always an option for a resident to plant their own tree. The only thing that we require is that you notify the forestry office, and again, you can do that through 311, so that we can issue the contractor a permit to plant the tree, and we can approve the species that's being planted. The permit doesn't cost any money, and that's just to keep our records accurate as to what's getting planted on Parkway citywide. So they can work with our office quite easily to speed up that process if they're willing to pay the money upfront and plant their own tree.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, and we are considering tonight approval and purchase of trees for replanting. It includes a long list of trees to be planted, I think just this season, and this is a good time to shout out to the Southeast Evanston Association, which has funded a tree in every ward for replanting as part of this proposal, so. Thank you to the Southeast Evanston Association, and thank you, Paul, for your work to encourage them.
You're welcome.
I think that's it, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you.
And before Paul leaves, one more comment. We're really going to step up our efforts to do all the things that you were all just talking about, reach out to more private businesses to see if they would be interested in purchasing trees, really do a much more aggressive effort to reach out to residents, especially in those areas that have been hardest hit, to let them know that there are options. Alderman Nguyen and I have been talking, for example, about sidewalks, that people have sidewalks they would like to have repaired. They don't always know that there are programs available. We need to do a better job of empowering our residents to help themselves in some respects, and I think with the time that we've been able now to free up on Paul's schedule to focus just on forestry issues, we'll be able to get much more aggressive in these areas, because we can't wait. We can't let our limited funds hold us back for really combating these issues head-on, and to get the stumps out and to get new trees planted as quickly as possible. So I've asked Paul really to really focus on those efforts now, and really get us into a higher gear. I think the community expects that. I think the tree canopy, the urban forest, is such an important part of Evanston, and I think we have a responsibility to deal with emerald ash bor as quickly as we can, get the new trees in the ground, and have that canopy return to, I think, what Evanston is famous for around the world.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
Yes, I have one more question or thought. I know in the parks that we have benches that have been dedicated by people in honor of someone or in memory of someone.
That's correct.
Do we also have a program where you can purchase a tree through the city?
We do have that, and that's available on our website. We have actually two different kinds of programs. We have a memorial tree program. We also just have a reforestation fund that you can donate to.
I would say that we should publicize that a lot more than we have. I think the benches are wonderful, but I think if people realized, I think people are coming to realize the degree to which we are losing our trees, that they might consider a tree instead of a bench, you know?
And we're going to do all those things here over the next several months, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, Joe McCray, the Deputy City Manager, is here to give you a report on the Summer Youth Employment Program for Saturday and then the Saturday that's coming up. Mr. McCray?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, City Clerk Green, and Mr. City Manager. Joe McCray, Deputy City Manager, happy to announce that this past Saturday, we had the first of two Saturdays for the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program. We had over 300 kids show up, well-dressed and ready to go, conducted several interviews. This Saturday, we will be hosting the second day, that's April 27th, 8:00 to 1:00 PM here at the Civic Center. We encourage all of our kids, 14 to 18, to come out. The one restriction is that you have to live in a 60201 or 60202 ZIP code. So we had a successful first Saturday, and we're looking forward to this Saturday. So we had a successful first Saturday, and we're looking forward to this Saturday being equally or even better attended, if you will, and will be ready. Thank you.
You left out one part. The employers told me that our students answered questions better than adults had answered them in interviews, and that they were an absolutely incredibly fabulous group of young people.
They were absolutely amazing.
Yeah, and they started coming at 6:30 in the morning, so.
Number one was here at, every year, I ask what time the number-one person got there. And the young lady that was number one this year got there at 5:45 a.m., so.
They were great. Thank you, Joe.
And Madam Mayor, one last item. I'd like to ask Mr. Steve Griffin to join me at the podium.
Oh, let's skip the last item. I don't want to hear this.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, I know you are aware that Steve Griffin, our director of community and economic development, has announced his departure. He is returning to Alabama to be the city administrator of Gulf Shores, Alabama, a community which he served as the community development director about 15 years ago, is going back there, a place he raised his family. We're very excited for him. Obviously, a huge loss for us here in the city of Evanston. Steve brought great stability to the community and economic development department. I think the strength of the staff there is really outstanding. I met today with the recruiter that is going to be, for the third time, doing a recruitment for us for community and economic development director. And I was able to tell her that, you know, the department's not an issue. It's a strong department, and whoever comes is going to inherit an absolutely outstanding operation. So Steve, on behalf of your colleagues here at the city of Evanston, have a little thing that you can take with you. The lighthouse, the Harley Clark Mansion, right over here, so you won't forget.
Northwest.
And Northwestern over on this side. So congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And it really has been an honor and a privilege to serve this community. I leave with incredible mixed and emotional feelings. Wally's continuing search for excellence is, you know, throughout the organization, and we're, you know, always up for that challenge. But more importantly, as I look at you all, I've gotten to know you very personally. You've always showed me and consistently the utmost respect. You always want, make that phone call, Steve, what's up with this? What happened there? What is this guy saying? That kind of thing. And you've always sought that out as opposed to, you know, tried convict us and hang. I mean, you're really about serving your residents, getting to the bottom line, and I truly will miss that about each and every one of you. And thank you for being, allowing me to be part of this team for as long as I've been here. Thank you very much.
We are all very sorry that you're leaving, but we wish you well.
That concludes my comments.
Thank you. City clerk, do you have communications for us?
The only communication I have, Madam Mayor, tonight is that the elections are over, and the results for the official results come in on the 30th of April, hopefully. And then we'll have the installation of the offices on the 13th of May. That's all for tonight.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comments, and the only speaker on agenda items is June Adrisskey.
I'm going to talk about the recent, tonight of those closed minutes. Recently, the city council and mayor and city staff held a closed-door meeting in regard to the sale of the Harley Clark Mansion. Word throughout the community is suggesting the meeting violated the law, since the sale of the additional parkland was discussed. When this went into committee, it was only to discuss the sale of the mansion. The Evanston Roundtable also with an editorial questioning this. Tonight, even if the minutes are released, citizens should be given an explanation of why the law was broken. Silence on the part of the council will suggest a cover-up possibly. What I am seeing here is a continued pattern of so-called economic development deals that are completely messed up and done in a manner that misuses valuable taxpayer dollars and resources. Beyond the used waste of our money, any public official who would sell off lakefront park property to anyone, their motives need to be questioned. It's time the city faces reality in the Harley Clark Mansion deal. No one produced a real bid, and going to closed-door meetings and creating a second bid is not a real bid. If it is part of a major public lakefront park and needs to be used, it really needs to be used for the public good. The current tenant needs to be given notice. Since they've never paid a fair market rent, a $1 rent for a year is ridiculous, and they should have been evicted a long time ago because they are refusing to pay for the maintenance. Not one dime of our tax dollars should really be given to them to relocate. The exterior of that building needs to be fixed, and there's money to fix it, I believe. Let me be clear about that. Wally is suggesting spending $2 million at Noys, and I don't understand that because what's $2 million doing at Noys? This is not, there's no collateral involved or anything from these people for this building. So we're going to spend $2 million for a tenant in the building, and we're going to use our capital to do this. So this makes little of any sense to me beyond the fact we're talking about tenants there tonight. What really we're doing is, again, wasting our money. Why are we using our capital? Our capital should be used to repair the buildings that we own. There always seems to be money here for what people want to do. And finally, the next step on this Harley Clark Mansion, in my view, is the city needs to take it over and run it. And a city staff member actually proposed this to me and basically said, we should be running our own programs out of there in recreation, ecology, and children's art programs. And this is really what's in the public interest, not selling this off for some type of hotel use and underground parking garage. I see this as not in the public interest. Did council members and the mayor learn anything from what happened with the South Branch Library? How many meetings are you going to face with hundreds of angry residents? Do any of you think residents of this community are going to sit back and let you basically take parkland and use it for a commercial use? If this, my own proposition on this, if this council continues to do this type of thing with economic development, I will organize people to boycott the businesses you support. And I will make it one of my priorities to basically create a boycott to make sure no one uses those businesses. And while some will say, yeah, people will use them, that's true, they will use them. But any business that loses customers, it's not a good deal. So thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers on non-agenda items are BK Rayo, Padma Rayo, Maggie Weiss, and Madeline Ducre. You each have three minutes. If you would please state your name and address for the record, that would help.
BK Rayo, 2246 Sherman. My comments were approved by my attorney. I submit it is quite annoying to watch Ms. Jane Grover act like a pestering bully as far as citizen comment from the row she is concerned.
Terrell, your comments are out of order.
I am not out of order. That is how she behaved. Let me read, please. I submit it is quite annoying to watch Ms. Jane Grover act like a pestering bully as far as citizen comment from the row she is concerned. So many times, she insisted that we have to say our comments her way instead of our way. Her behavior on February 25 was so reprehensible as to perhaps even be illegal.
Israel, would you stick to the facts and not your opinion, please?
This is the fact. This happened on February 25. If you don't recognize, it is your problem, not my problem. Let me read. Her behavior on February 25 was so reprehensible as to perhaps be illegal. On April 26, April 16, I was not feeling well physically, but my mind was sharp. So I wrote a few of my thoughts and requested my daughter to read them for me at the council meeting. I submit that if Jane Grover lives to my age, she should know that old age may slow down a person's body, even when their mind is on full alert. Nobody else at the council that day, including the mayor, had any objection to my daughter reading what I wrote. But Ms. Grover came up with various unsolicited so-called suggestions for this elderly person on how to submit her comments. Ms. Grover, you have no authority over me. If I were you, I would have obeyed the rules of council and would never have opened my mouth during citizen comment. I submit that you went too far, and you deserve to be censured. Wear that like a badge of shame and keep quiet when we speak. To the rest of the council, it would be helpful if you save all of the candle trees. Leave up to your claim of being a TreeCityUSA. I shall return.
Thank you.
Padma Rayo, 2246 Sherman. My comments were approved by my attorney, a competent licensed legal professional. I submit that's more than your seventh ward alderman can claim. At your April 16 meeting, she broke your rules yet again by demanding that my mom can't do the same thing that white people did. I submit that even an inactive lawyer should know that such bigotry is unconstitutional. We don't want demands from one who I submit seems too abysmally ignorant and insufferably arrogant to follow your own rule.
Terrell, you are out of order.
It seems that way. Too abysmally ignorant and insufferably arrogant to follow your own simple rule that you keep quiet during citizen comment. It is a simple rule. It has been broken multiple times. Instead of enforcing your own rules, your mayor attacks and tries to silence minorities who ask you not to violate their rights. I submit that when you let white people break your rules, then you have no authority to impose your unconstitutional apartheid against minorities. As for your demand, my neighbors had told me they sent you comments by email or on paper against your vote at Kendall, but you never mentioned these at your meetings. I submit that my mom has every right to choose the method that results in recordation instead of suppression. In the plainest English, shut up during citizen comment as your rules and the First Amendment require. I submit that your eighth ward member's words and deeds resulted in a waste of tax dollars for her pet project Wine Bar and Viola's lawsuit against the city according to their amended complaint, and Ms. Davey's federal lawsuit against the city according to her complaint. I submit that our tax dollars would be better spent on youth programs, job training, and helping our neighbors keep their homes and feed their families. Stop antagonizing taxpayers. Spend our tax dollars for the entire community, including minorities. We object to your vote at Kendall to sentence over two dozen mature trees to death for no reason and to endanger pedestrians with an alley that dumps traffic onto the narrow street. Your own city code requires tree protection and traffic safety, but you ignored it. Your record includes the Kendall developers' lawyers letter stating that Holland and Knight was hired to sue the city. Your records show that you paid Holland and Knight tens of thousands of our tax dollars to represent the city. Illinois Supreme Court rules forbid a law firm from representing against its current or former client. Your record shows that your first ward member's son works for Holland and Knight. The Evanston Patch reported that your first ward member was overheard assuring the developers' lawyer that your vote would be pushed through no matter what taxpayers say. You voted without discussing any taxpayers' concerns. In Nevada Commission on Ethics v. Carrigan, the U.S. Supreme Court held that when a council member's campaign manager was consulted on a project, that council member was forbidden from pushing for and voting on the matter. So I submit your first ward member's push and vote for the Kendall project, when her son's law firm was hired by the developer, must be illegal too. Stop trying to silence minorities who ask you to protect taxpayers' legal rights and money. Stop violating taxpayers' constitutional rights. Protect the trees and pedestrians at Kendall. Protect the Kendall trees.
Thank you. Ms. Weiss.
My name's Maggie Weiss, and I live at 2744 Lawndale. And I'm just here to pass out invitations for the Noys Cultural Arts Center open house, which we figured the only open date we could find prior to the May 6 Human Service meeting is Thursday night, May 2. And we understand if you might have to come late.
Thank you very much. Is Madeline here? You do not look like Madeline Ducre. Patty.
No, I'm not. Madeline did ask me to sign her up. She was, had all intents and purposes been here, but something detained her, so she said she will be here. The next council meeting, which is May the 13th, to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Esther.
And while I'm here, I hope you allow me to congratulate Steve Griffin on his new job. I will miss him, truly miss him, because he's been a great person in helping the CHODOS, the Community Housing Development Organization. When he came, we had training and received a lot of information. The CHODOS, and especially me, will miss you, and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esther. That concludes citizen comment. And next, we have a special order of business. City manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. If you recall, when we were here last, discussions regarding the Davis Street Improvement Project, there was concerns regarding the 500 block of Davis Street. There was a community meeting held the end of last week at Giordano's Pizza that was attended by a good number of folks. Alderman Tendem, Alderman Grover, Alderman Fisk, Alderman Wilson. And I'm vamping while Ms. Robinson makes her way to the podium. Trying to make her way to the podium, Suzette. So from that meeting, we had a number of good ideas come from that, and Ms. Robinson's here this evening to review the options and to share with you what we believe is a consensus recommendation to move forward. Ms. Robinson, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. City council and clerk Green, city manager, Suzette Robinson, director of Public Works. I'm just going to go over the Davis Street. Alternative one is the, all right, was presented to council on the 16th. And this is in regards to the 500 block of Davis Street and Davis between Henman and Chicago Avenue. And at that meeting, we discussed the impacts of the proposal on that block would have removed ankle parking and resulted in the elimination of 10 parking spaces. City council asked us to go out and evaluate the surrounding areas to see what we could do to reduce the parking impacts, and also to talk to the businesses about the economic benefits associated with biking and having a protected bike path. So we did provide this data, which you see here, the impacts of protected bike lanes, and these are statistics that are provided by the entities that are listed up there. In the city of Chicago, Kenzie Street indicated that ridership had increased by 60% along a protected bike lane. In Washington, DC, ridership increased by 40%, and sidewalk riding was down 14%. And in New York, ridership increased by 28.5%. Just some of the economic benefits of biking, according to, once again, this is a New York City statistic, after they constructed their protected bike lane, local businesses saw 49% in retail sales in comparison to businesses throughout the Manhattan area, only seeing 3% increase. American consumers purchase 19 million bicycles each year, 20% more than cars and trucks combined, and 25 more than boats. So bicycle, this kind of all leads to, it's the second most common for So bicycle, this kind of all leads to it's the second most common form of outdoor recreation according to studies by Outdoor Foundation, with 60 million Americans enjoying the activity. So that's just to say, this is why we're advocating for having this connected, protected bike path for all users to enjoy riding in Evanston. So we created an alternative, and this is the picture that you see here, alternative Actually, the design characteristics, we preserved the ankle parking and we eliminated one travel lane. Davis on that block is currently two travel lanes. We would eliminate one of the travel lanes and construct a wider with travel lane. And the impacts or concerns with this alternative is that the clearance around cars with cars that are backing out of the angled parking into the lane, you know, there's a lot of double parking on that street with valet and carryouts, and then also truck clearance at the alley intersections. Those are some impacts of that alternative. Alternative 3 involves the same layout that we presented before. We went through and completed a redesign where we were able to add three additional parking spaces on the 500 block of Davis. We also added an additional parking space on Chicago Avenue and four on Henman. So if you look, I guess to, that's still your left, too. You see the additional parking space up in yellow in the corner on Chicago Avenue and then the four that would be located on Henman in front of Mather. That is currently just a no parking area. It's not a loading zone. It was just no parking. So that's actually a positive benefit regardless and some potential additional revenue for the city. So the impacts of that would be the reduction of two overall parking spaces. So with the additional eight spaces listed above, the original design called for the reduction of 10 spaces, this will result in the reduction of two parking spaces only. So when we met with the businesses, and there were actually some residents there as well, we talked about, you know, what made the most sense. And they actually wanted to combine the two alternatives that we presented and conduct a trial associated with alternate 2. And what that would mean is that we would preserve the diagonal parking and we would create a mock bike lane and push the parking out and have and do some temporary striping so that we could actually simulate what would happen if we were to go down to one wider lane on Davis Street. And then we could evaluate the traffic patterns once that occurred. We were a little reluctant because the traffic volume itself is very slow because it's a three-way stop. So you're not going to see massive amounts of traffic because cars can only go at one at a time via the three-way stop at Henman and Davis. But we also are concerned about, you know, determining how people are going to behave. It's hard to figure that out. So it's best to see it sometimes. And so we want to take a look at whether there'll be actually enough clearance and see what type of impact that will be before we go and make a permanent change to the pattern. So we would, we're proposing to do this May 13 for a week or two before the construction would occur, so that we could see if it made sense to do this as opposed to alternative 3, which would be the parallel spaces and the reduction of only two parking spaces. And the other thing that we would evaluate also, we did some preliminary traffic counts in the area, and we did note that there was a tremendous amount of double parking for carryout. And so we are also going to look further at looking at the additional spaces and perhaps establishing short-term 20-minute spaces for that type of activity to occur within that block as well. So what we're asking is for council approval of the Davis Street project from Chicago Avenue to Henman as originally presented, and we would defer the final parking layout, which is really just striping until the trial and evaluation can be completed. So we will come back to you after that.
We have a couple of questions. Alderman, when?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Robinson. I think you learned a couple of really good things. My question is, will we add the additional parking spaces on Henman and Chicago no matter what?
Yes.
Okay. So will they be added immediately and they'll be added along with the same time we're doing the trial?
Yes, yes, we would have those set up.
Okay.
It's just a matter of, and we didn't talk about this, whether they would be metered spaces on Henman, because they are across on the opposite side of the street. They're metered spaces on that, the first four spaces or five spaces, Roger, on the first four spaces on the west side of Henman.
They're meters.
Are meters. So it would just be a question of whether those others would be meters or not. So that's probably a question for the Parking and Transportation Committee.
I think there should be meter.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Suzette, thank you for being willing to come out and meet with the business owners. I thought the meeting was really helpful. And to my colleagues who joined us at the meeting, I appreciate your presence as well. As Alderman Wynn said, I think we did learn a lot at that meeting. And again, I appreciate the support of the council in letting this, giving us the additional time so that we could meet with the business owners, which is something that we will continue to do in the future. I'm happy with the idea that we're going to do a little bit of testing, a little bit of comparison to how the street is going to be eventually striped. My own guess is that we'll end up with parallel parking and a two-lane on Davis, but this will give us an opportunity to see if we can retain that angled parking. And I think everyone was happy with that. I think, you know, you can never make 100% of the people entirely satisfied, but I think people went away both understanding the reasons why we were doing this and also that we really care about supporting them and their businesses. And as I knew, because it's in my ward and I traverse that part of Davis Street several times a day, there are so many businesses there that are dependent on their carryout in order to keep their businesses thriving. And that, of course, along with valet and other double parking, means that that's something that we have to take into consideration, too. So thank you. You did a great job at the meeting. I thought everyone was listening very well and making the points that needed to be made. And by the end of the meeting, I think everyone was satisfied that we were doing the best we can with the vision that we have for the entire city. So thank you all very much for coming to that.
So is the council agreed that we're going to proceed with the trial? Is that all right with everybody? Is that enough consent for you, City Manager?
I'll keep the video handy.
Okay. Thank you very much, Director Robinson. That concludes the special order of business. Alderman Rainey, could we please have the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Was the special order of business held or what? It's for action?
Oh. City Manager?
I advise the mayor, we could take, I think the general direction was sufficient.
All right. All righty.
Well, you can include it in the consent agenda.
Well, I'll just move to hold it.
Fine.
Move to hold it.
No, I think that my understanding was that the council agreed with the recommendations of the Public Works Director, and that was the general direction.
All right. But it's a temporary. Okay. All right. The consent agenda, Madam Mayor. First item is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 1. The Administration Public Works Committee met this evening and recommend your approval of the payroll through March 24, $2,765,212.54, and through April 7 in the amount of $2,568,979.4. City of Evanston bills through April 23 in the amount of $4,518,783.83. The committee asks your approval for the renewal of the CAD Software License and Service Agreement with Sun Guard Public Sector, a sole-source purchase for the Police Department's computerated dispatch system in the amount of $72,828.32. Funding is from the emergency 911 account. We ask your approval also of a contract with Three Point Athletics for the city's golf instruction program for an additional one-year term from April 2013 through April 2014. The total program contract value is projected at $22,500, with revenue from the program's registration in excess of $33,000. We ask your approval also of a one-year contract award for the 2013 Green Bay Road Landscape Maintenance to the LowBitter Landscape Concepts Management, Inc., in the amount of $24,804.53. Your approval is requested for the purchase of 200 trees and planting services for 100 trees from Suburban Tree Consortium in the amount of $55,077.48. Committee asks your approval to authorize the city manager to execute a one-year contract for the purchase of fire hydrants from HD Supply Water Works in the amount of $49,610, and for the purchase of distribution system valves from EJ USA in the amount of $39,465. Committee approves and asks your approval for the purchase of six replacement vehicle and units in the total amount of $549,171.30, as follows. Curry Motors, one Chevy Tahoe, in the amount of $31,697. Standard Equipment Company, a street sweeper in the amount of $167,293. Prairie Archway International, two dump trucks with plows and spreaders in the amount of $286,650. Auto Barn of Evanston, one small pickup truck in the amount of $23,102.30. The Mirror Midwest, one stump grinder in the amount of $40,429. We ask your approval to authorize the city manager to sign a one-year lease renewal agreement with Chicago Harley-Davidson in the amount of $26,019 for the period of June 1 through May 31, 2014, for seven Harley-Davidson motorcycles. Your approval is requested for a one-year contract extension for the purchase of 500 tons of modified hot-mix asphalt at a cost of $52 per ton and 300 tons of modified hot-mix binder at the cost of $44 per ton to Arrow Road Construction, doing business as Healy Asphalt, for a cost of $39,200. We ask your approval for the adoption of Resolution 20R13, releasing the closed session meeting minutes listed on Exhibit A and finding that a need still exists for confidentiality as to the minutes on Exhibit 2. We request your approval for Resolution 22R13, which authorizes the destruction of certain audio recordings of the Evanston City Council closed session meeting minutes listed on Exhibit 1 of Resolution 22R13. Your approval is requested for Resolution 21R13, authorizing the city manager to execute the local agency agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation and Construction Engineering Services Agreement with Alfred Benish &amp; Company for federal participation for Bridge Street Reconstruction Project. Funding for engineering services is provided by the City Capital Improvement Fund account in the amount of $240,000, for which the city will be reimbursed $192,000 or 80% by the Highway Bridge Program Funds through IDOT. The city's share will be $48,000 or 20%. Construction funding is provided by Highway Bridge Program Funds through IDOT in the amount of $1,561,760.80 and 387,940.20 in local funding provided by Bridge Street Project Account 415885. We ask your approval of Resolution 24R13, authorizing the manager to execute an easement agreement with the Water Reclamation District for the Bridge Street Reconstruction Project. We ask your approval also of Resolution 26R13, authorizing the manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement for repair of Davis Street sewer with the Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago. We ask your approval for the introduction of Ordinance 44013, which decreases the number of Class B-1 liquor licenses now in force from six to five due to the closure of the keg of Evanston 810 Grove Street. Your approval is requested to adopt, to introduce Ordinance 45013, decreasing the number of Class AA liquor licenses now in force from one to zero due to the closure of the Central Street Cafe, 2800 on Central Street.
Can you suspend it?
Yes. We request your approval, the committee requests your approval of Ordinance 48013, which increases the number of Class C licenses to 32, to permit issuance of a Class C license to Farmhouse Evanston, doing business as Farmhouse Tavern, 703 Church Street. Madam Mayor, the committee also agrees that I should move to suspend the rules on this matter so that we can then vote to adopt this this evening. So I therefore move to suspend the rules. Second, next, A12 is approval of Ordinance 27013, by which the city council would authorize paving of the alley north of Madison, east of Sherman through the special assessment process. Funding is provided by special assessment funds and by homeowners to be collected over a period of 10 years. City's share is $31,445.64. We ask your approval to adopt Ordinance 40013, which amends city code of 2012 to increase the number of Class D licenses to 22, to permit the issuance of a Class D license to Table 9, doing business as Company 1307 Chicago Avenue. And the Planning and Development Committee met this evening and recommend your approval to adopt Resolution 28R13, which reserves the city's right to $7,104,575 in tax-exempt bonds under the bond volume cap allocation. This resolution must be adopted by May 1. Approval of a sidewalk café forefounded at 1631 Chicago Avenue is, has been approved by the committee and request your concurrence. Next is ordinance, this is Ordinance 38013, which recommends increasing the allowed production limit for micro-distilleries from 15,000 gallons, we believe it should read, per year to 35,000 per year. The amendment would bring the zoning ordinance regulation into agreement with the city's liquor license classification, which was amended to allow the 35,000-gallon yearly limit by Ordinance 17013, which we adopted February 11, 2013. Next item is off the consent agenda, and I think I can introduce it and indicate there was an amendment, and the committee chair can just, I'm going to let the committee chair deal with that one.
All right.
P4. Ordinance 46013 is off the consent agenda, will be addressed by the committee chair. Ordinance 35013 and 1013 are both off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. by the committee chair. The committee recommends your approval of Ordinance 41013, which grants a special use for the operation of Type 2 Restaurant, Naf Naf Grill, at 1629 Orrington. We ask your approval also for Ordinance 4013, which amends the zoning ordinance to allow for the expansion of legal nonconforming, one-through-four-family residential uses by major variation process to increase the structure's bulk. The Human Services Committee met earlier, and the township supervisor recommends that the city council approve the township bills, payroll, and medical payments for the month of March, in the amount of $152,743.36. The mayor has made no appointments for your approval, and therefore I move the consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Grover, do you have ANPW for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As to item A11, Ordinance 48013, permitting issuance of a Class C liquor license to Farmhouse Evanston, doing business as Farmhouse Tavern. The ordinance having been introduced and our rule suspended, I move action.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to pass Ordinance 48013, permitting issuance of a Class C liquor license to Farmhouse Evanston. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
The consent agenda passes. Alderman Grover, does that complete your report?
It does, Madam.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk, Planning and Development.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, TJ. You're all done. Item P4, Ordinance 47013, amending the zoning ordinance to allow indoor recreation as a special use in the I-2 district. We supported Alderman Rainey's amendment that not to remove the term "commercial" from the zoning definition, and so I move approval of the ordinance as amended.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance as amended. Does anyone want to speak to the issue?
Just introduce the ordinance.
Introduce, okay. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Okay. For P5, Ordinance 46013, amending the zoning ordinance to allow yard waste transfer facilities as a special use in the I-3 district. The Ward Alderman recommended that we hold this in committee, and we concur. So it will be held to the next meeting of the Planning and Development Committee in order to get more information.
Thank you. Do you want to speak to Piece 6 and 7, or?
No.
Okay.
No, I think we handled those and...
Okay. All right.
Works as well.
It is nine, not quite 9:30, and we are at call of the wards.
So those are held?
Alderman Fisk.
What, what doors?
Six and seven are held.
Are held until May 13.
May 13, okay. Steve, I'm going to have to say goodbye one more time, and then we'll have cake. But you've been an incredible help to me, and especially during my round as Chair of PND. And not only that, but you've been an incredible help to me in meetings with developers. I think you've been wonderful. You've always known your stuff when you were there, enjoyed playing good cop, bad cop with you, and Attorney Farrar, so that was fun. I'll miss you a lot. And I just really appreciate all that you've done for the city, and your professionalism, and just everything you've brought. Your good company, your positive spirit, the incredible amount of work that you've done, the difference that you've made in the economic, you know, development, community development area of the city, has been huge, really huge. And, I mean, I've watched this for a long time, haven't been on the council for that long, but have been on that side of the dais watching this for a long time. And by far, our division is just so much better than it's ever been in the past, and that's due to you, and Wally, of course. But you've played a huge role in that, and have made, in the short time you've been here in Evanston, just an incredible, incredible difference. So we'll miss you a lot. And then I want to thank again everyone for their input on the 500 block of Davis. I do think that we need to do a little bit more work on how we communicate with our business owners. We had a little bit of a stumble there, but I think we understand what it is, and how we all need to work together to make sure that we're doing the correct outreach to them, so that they know we love them.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
I'd also like to thank in with a round of thank you to Steve. I know we've only had an opportunity to work together for the past two years, but I valued all of our encounters. I valued all the contributions that you've made to the second ward, particularly the west side of Evanston. And I'm just thankful for you being a very straightforward and a straight shooter. So I hope you take that with you, and I look forward to thanking you one-on-one before you go. Bye-bye. Oh, two quick things. First of all, I also want to thank the staff from last Saturday. Joe, the members of the youth department, outstanding event last Saturday, the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program, extremely impressed with the kids' professionalism. I thought that they were better prepared this year than I've seen them in the past, and a lot of that has had to do with your focus and the efforts of the youth staff. So thank you very much. And a special thank you to Mary Collins and Kelly Elwood, and the students of Evanston Township High School. I had an opportunity to participate at the ETHS Earth Ave, along with the Kiwanis Club, and I had a wonderful time. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the police department, Officer Henderson and Officer Blumenthal, Blumenberg, for the police beat meeting that we had for the seventh, third, and fourth meeting at the library. It was very informative. I think it was excellent. I think it's a great tradition that we're starting, and I look forward to the next meetings. A lot of people came with a lot of good questions. The presentation was really, really good. Steve, I hate to say goodbye. I have just so enjoyed working with you. All of the things that Alderman Braithwaite and Fisk have said are absolutely true. And, you know, we know the real reason is, it's just the spring we've had, you know. So I will really miss you, and I have to say, you've always been the calm person in the room when things get a little hairy, and I really appreciated that. Your professionalism is just second to none. So good luck. Gulf Shores is really lucky.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Thanks, Steve, and no report.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Well, Mr. Griffin, I'm sorry you're not going to be here to see what's really going to happen in the fifth ward. We're going to do it. But thank you for the effort. I really do appreciate all the time that we spent together, driving around, looking at it, and really understanding the vision that we have there, and trying to help us move forward. So, but the best of everything to you, and to your new position. I just want to remind people that our beat, our meeting will be on Wednesday night at 7:00 at Fleetwood, and the violence prevention meeting is at Christ Temple Church at 7:00 on Thursday night. And I just want to say that on Friday afternoon, Alderman Grover, Alderman Tindham, and I were here with the student government from ETHS and some Northwestern students. And it was such a fun thing to see young people sitting up here and looking at government from a different perspective. It was really a very fun afternoon.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to announce, too, that the sixth ward beat meeting, first of its kind, will be tomorrow night at 7:00 at Kurtz Cafe, and looking forward to that. I wanted to actually do a little shout-out to the folks who were involved in the Unity Weekend, which was this past Saturday and Sunday. Congregants from Second Baptist, the Unitarian Church, St. Nicholas Catholic Church, and my synagogue, Beth Emmett, over 550 people volunteered to do service projects around the community. It was a great way to build relationships among different parishes, different congregations, and the program, I hope, is a, with a start like that, I hope it's a program that we can certainly expand and be more inclusive of other congregations. And lastly, I would like to say thank you to Steve. I think that this opportunity you have is maybe once-in-a-lifetime sort of opportunity to rebuild a city just devastated by destruction of the hurricane, or the Gulf Oil, or whatever BP. And anyway, I wish you the best of luck. We'll miss you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, thank you to the cast, crew, and the staff of the Levy Center for a really magnificent production, musical production of The Wizard of Oz at the Levy Center, weekend before last, that netted us a profit of about $2,500 from that production, just so you know. Thank you to the police department for a really great beat meeting, problem-solving team beat meeting at the library last week. Good information and great outreach. This Saturday is Community Day on Central Street. So if you spend your money on Central Street, a certain portion of those proceeds will go to a number of Evanston nonprofits. So it's your incentive to spend money on Central Street because it benefits, it has larger benefit for all of Evanston. And then farewell and thank you, Steve Griffin, for the time you've spent here, for helping me flatten out my learning curve on this job. You've been a big part of that. And thank you for all your great work and good deeds for Evanston, for Evanston 150. I know your wife, Margaret, was heavily involved in that as well. So you embedded yourself quite quickly here, and it's hard to see you go. But thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, too, want to thank the police department, the chief of our meeting at the outpost last week, and it was really, really well-attended. And one of the main items discussed at the meeting was the issue of a Chicago bar called Siblings, which is a bar just west of Dodge on the Chicago side, where there have been several incidents, including shootings. And it was agreed at that meeting that a group of us will go by bus, driven by our great problem-solving officer, Officer Jenkins. We're going to the Chicago, it's a commercial business hearing regarding the first step in the license issue for that bar. So we have lots of people going, probably 12 or 13 people, and we've always made a big impact at other Chicago commercial business meetings that we've been to. So look forward to that. That'll be Thursday morning, and anybody who wants to go, be at the outpost at 8:00 a.m. The meeting starts at 9:00. I want to thank Steve. I will never forget a ride home from a local theater in one of the city vans with Steve behind the wheel. It was one of the wildest rides I've ever been on, down Western Avenue, but what a lot of fun. And, you know, I hope you're not leaving because of the problems on Howard Street. I'm sure that's not the case. I'm sure that, speaking of flattening your learning curve, I'm sure some of our issues down there helped flatten yours. It's just been wonderful working with you. You're just such a good, giving person that I just really am envious of Gulf Shores. And I mentioned on Facebook that the first time it snows next year, we're all coming down. So thank you, thank you very much, really, from the bottom of my heart. You've been really great. And I know your staff feels the same.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
The ninth ward will be having a police beat meeting on Thursday at 7:00 p.m. at the Levy Center. And Steve, sorry to see you go. Dave is very upset that you won't be playing golf with him this summer, but I know you'll be playing plenty of golf in your new place. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you. All right, I agree with the unanimous view that Steve has been terrific. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
I do. Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session, and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2A, C1, and C21.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.